Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, minutes for meetings of November 1st and 7th, 2016, to be accepted and approved by the town council. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting?
So moved.
I have a second. Motion been made by Councilman Catanzaro, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Yeah, I have it. Item number two, achievement first charter expansion. Receive request from Roderick DeSilva for discussion on the achievement first charter expansion. Mr. DeSilva?
My name is Roderick DeSilva, 100 in Itzenavon, North Providence. Congratulations, Councilman Catanzaro.
Thank you.
It's your last meeting.
Thank you very much.
2012, achievement first charter school opened. Prior to that, I was here when I was not on the school committee. And I spoke against it from a financial point of view. At that time, the school committee and the council both adopted resolutions that they set down to ride seven-nothing in favor of denying, being against the application. The application first started in Cranston where it was defeated locally there. After that, it morphed into Providence and Warwick, Cranston, and North Providence. I believe North Providence is a four percent, Cranston I think seven, and Warwick two, but don't quote me on those. Pretty sure North Providence is four. And Providence would be the remainders. However, if Providence did not fill those, they could go into the other communities. The original, the original achievement first application, and I'll give you a little history so we all know what we're talking about. The original achievement first application included East Providence. At that time, the chairman of the Board of Regents, George Carrullo, took it out. And he did not want it because of its budget impact. And it's interesting that when it did pass at the Board of Regents, Mr. Carrullo wasn't deciding vote, four to three. Going forward, the achievement first Merrill Academy, which charges, it's a budget impact, and that's why I came here six years ago to speak against it. And so as reported in the Providence Journal, September 30th, they are looking to triple their growth. Now, the original intention of a charter school, this was to be a model of excellence and not a parallel school system. They are creating a parallel school system where they talk about, you know, money follows the child. But the money they're talking about is their per pupil expenditure. And I know I've done this before with you, but I have my only prop I ever use, it's the division algorithm. And our whole entire North Providence budget is here. The number of kids are here. That quotient is our per pupil expenditure. So they don't pay pensions, we pay pensions. They don't have a basketball team, sports program, we have that. We have many schools, they have the one school. So our per pupil expenditure is always a moving target, and it's a specious argument because quite frankly, if you take four kids out of a fourth grade school, you did not re- in Merrill, for instance, you did not reduce the number, the number to run that classroom, you just took four kids out. And you still have to pay the teachers, you still have to pay the lecturers, you still have to pay the whatever it is you're paying, but in actuality, you're paying it with less money. I dare say if 200 kids came to our school system tomorrow, it'd be hard, but there'd be room. They wouldn't all come to the same fifth grade class in the same school. Our per pupil expenditure would go down because we'd have more here, the same here, less there. One of my other bugaboo's about achievement first is how they select their kids. And I know it's done by lottery, but in Providence, you're given all the applications and achievement first is listed. Once you are selected there, then they have that 15-page document where your child will read, your child will wear this, your child, your child, your child. Public school does not have that option. So if they want to market themselves as a public charter school and take money away from existing traditional public schools, then what we're really doing is submitting a parallel school system that will have a budget impact for all of us here. In my last, before we look at the document, I'm assuming you all got the document, in case you didn't, I have it. Why Massachusetts schools are better. This is in the Providence Journal, why Massachusetts schools are better. Massachusetts schools soundly defeated. So we're supposed to be like Massachusetts schools. They soundly defeated their charter school initiative, based a large part on an evaluation that was done by Moody's. And I would suggest that council entertain that. I think Moody's is the gold standard. We heard enough about it in the election, how the town has an excellent, Moody's rating, and we're appreciative of that. We do, it helped us with, it will help us with our financing of our new schools, I'm sure. Maybe the council or the town should look at a bond rating, a Moody's rating, excuse me, of how this charter school financially impact this town. That's what Massachusetts did in communities like Lawrence, Boston, and some of the other outlying communities that are urban ring as we are. And it basically said to them that an expansion of the charter school would have fiscal, a negative fiscal impact. Then once the charter schools in Massachusetts were defeated, Moody's came out again and analyzed that and told them where they were, the savings were going to be going forward. I don't know how many of you are familiar with the achievement first application for expansion. It's, it was submitted on September 29th. If I was there tonight for a hearing, the final say will be decided December 20th. You will have an opportunity, and I'll go over that with you in a moment, but if anybody individually wants to weigh in on it, you can do it on their website. You don't have to be at the hearings. The hearings tend to be, sometimes they can be a little controversial. Did you get the document that we sent? Assuming you all have this document?
Yes.
I added a couple of things to it, so how about if I just? I had a request from Mrs. Gray, I'll just give two, you should hear it, I should have it. I had a request from Mrs. Gray that we-
Thank you.
That we have a financial impact going forward, and that's in there. You've read the bullet statements. If you look at the second page, talks about Mayor Avedizian not supporting it, Mayor Fung not supporting it tonight. Mayor Loza spoke first at the hearing. He is supporting the current children who are there moving forward. And I understand that. But he is not currently supporting, I, the expansion, which would triple its growth, pending the resolution of how that, how he's going to reconcile a Providence budget that over 10 years will stand to lose 173 to 179 million. That is the sixth, fifth or sixth bullet down. There have been some public hearings, and the North Providence School Committee has sent you this document because in a five to two vote, we are against the expansion based on its budget impact. If you look at the budget impact on the third page, year, the enrollment, and that's cost the district, would be 10 years from now, 1.2 million. It's a lot of money for a small town. It is estimated that achievement first will increase their current enrollment from approximately 720 students to 3,000 students in 10 years, and that's what their application is for. It is projected that North Providence students would approximate 4% of their total enrollment. So I think Mr. Mackley has just assumed a 2% increase that's conservative for presentation purposes. So right now, it's costing us a quarter of a million, almost, and going forward, it would increase. That's a huge budget impact. Now, the other piece is, every one of you, including the mayor and members of the school committee, worked diligently and very hard to have our bond passed. And it was overwhelmingly passed, and I read two things into that. One, support for the school system. And two, I think building two new schools and knocking down and decommissioning the 1930s buildings will certainly upgrade and modernize us, will improve our, it will improve our whole physical, what I'm trying to say, will, in terms of running the new buildings, will be a whole lot less expensive than running 1930s buildings, which are beginning to get Wi-Fi with old boilers and everything else. And to absorb a 1.2 million dollar impact, this seems to me that, that just doesn't make sense. If we're going to spend an extra 1.2 million dollars on education, we're building these new schools, it should stay here in the town. Do you have in your packet the law? I think it's the very last page, oversight, so the new law is under section B, 1677-5-1. Section C, local written support shall be required for proposed charter that is a network charter school is defined wherein. Mayor All Academy, achievement first is a network school. And so, written support means a resolution or ordinance granted by the town or city council for each proposed sending district, where the council considers the fiscal and educational welfare of the municipality and students after at least one public hearing. I would suggest that you apply that law to the current situation. Perhaps you want to get legal advice from Mr., from your own council, and Mr. Welch was not here, but he can dive into that law for you. That law, I believe, was cosponsored by Bill O'Brien, came out of the Senate. There is some local control, and it's not in the school committee's hands, it's in your hands. And I would just urge that, you know, going forward, if this passes, then it's a huge budget impact. And I'm here because of the huge budget impact. When we fight for dollars for the school department to run our schools and to move our schools forward, and I'm not here to talk about achievement first test scores or any of that stuff. We can talk about that if you want to have that. I have some answers perhaps that are not in line with other people think, but it's about the budget impact. Hope I was clear. Hope I was cogent. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to ask, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you for coming and presenting. Am I correct in saying you said that Mayor Loza wants the expansion, but only if the charter schools-
Mayor Loza is currently proposing, Mayor Loza, as of tonight, is supporting children who are there now in their K through four, moving into the middle school and moving into our high school. They will not have to go to another school. The achievement first expansion is not just those children, it's tripled. So it's not going to be the 729 or whatever's there right now, it would be the 3,000. And he has not supported the second part of it. And it's in the Providence Journal, I believe it was on, it had to have been Thanksgiving morning.
Well, I'm not concerned whether he's supporting or not, whatever, whatever he's asking is-
Well, in terms of the money.
Oh, hold on. What I'm asking is, am I correct in saying he would support if the charter schools paid for the kids, not the city of Providence?
He is looking to have achievement first, he's looking to have, I had it here somewhere, he's looking to have achievement first, for lack of a better term, raise the money. Or come to the table in terms of finding the money. Because he doesn't believe the, when I'm just quoting what was, paraphrasing what was in the paper, that 179 million dollar hit. The original hit was supposed to be 29. Then it came out that Matthew Clark said, oh, wait a minute, I didn't extrapolate for 10 years. So it was between 173, and it's internal audit. This Providence City Council, by the way, has, is not supporting it. And they'd be actually asked for a stay in the December 20th decision deadline because they want more hearings. That's also been reported in the Journal. But Mayor Loza is not supporting the expansion because of the money. I believe I read in the Journal, Avedizian has a declining population, and I believe Mayor Fung said he is, has a great relationship with his school department and would like to see it stay that way. So he's not supporting it either.
And where did you say the commissioner of education was on the issue?
Say that again.
I heard you mention the commissioner of education, but he's for it or against it?
Commissioner of Education came out yesterday in today's paper that he is for it. And he also put in op-ed, I think it might have been in today's paper, saying that the city of Providence, even though it's a budget impact, will have 10 years to fix that. So he's dancing on this side, and the mayor's dancing on this side, but there's 179 million dollar gap that would be funneled to a for-profit. It's a for-profit school. It's built as a public school, but it's a for-profit school. Who, who funds these schools and gives them their grants would be the Broad Foundation, the Walmarts, the Koch Brothers, people of that, like that.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Councilman?
Just to understand the funding of this.
Yes.
So you have 29 students, costing the town 239,000. Do we pay them directly, or is that commodity or state aid?
No, they don't. No, they, well, we get the state aid, but then the state aid took it to Washington or somewhere else. Look at Davies, for instance. Davies used to take nobody, very few students from North Providence until the formula got changed. See, the formula, the fair funding formula was enacted so that our school department budgets were never held hostage downtown. Maybe you had somebody who was the Speaker of the House, or maybe you had somebody in the Senate, and you could funnel more money into your schools. So the fair funding formula was enacted, but it was enacted and just was our commissioner. She brought this in. So if you know that there's a certain amount of money attached per kid, as opposed to every year it's a, it's an act of the General Assembly, we have a surplus this year, put it in education. We don't, don't give them any. It's a fair funding formula. So the money comes in, but then we funnel out. So Davies, we pay to send children to Davies, we never did that.
Okay, so let's take it for instance that we have a child in the school system now-
Yes.
And their parents from September decide that they want to put them in a parochial school, Catholic school. Where does that funding go?
That's their, that's on them. We don't fund that.
So it's, no, 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 I understand that, but does the state now say you have less of a population and they hold the state funding?
I'm not understanding the question.
So you still get the same funding for the child even though the child's not-
We have maintenance effort from the town, or an increase, and then we have our state funding formula based on our population, and all the things like charter school reimbursement, special education busing, there's a whole host. I mean, if you look at the ride regulations, God bless John Mackley, he's on top of all of it.
So basically, 10 kids leave tomorrow and they go to St. Thomas. How funded pays?
That is not, that is not a hit like it would be for the achievement first, where we have to directly pay achievement first.
Can you come up to the microphone, please? Just state your name for the record.
Melinda Smith, Superintendent of Schools. And Mr. DiStefano, for children that attend parochial schools, we do not get that state aid. So in the parochial school, I don't believe gets it either.
So if you had 10 kids this year, you're receiving the aid on, next year decide to go to a private school, you'll lose that, those funds.
Exactly.
Okay. And then I just have one other question. And again, I'm not as experienced with the school committee as you are.
I'm not sure.
Doesn't the fair funding formula change in 2018?
It, it doesn't change, it levels off.
So it levels off?
Yeah, so it's been increased over the years to bring urban ring communities and, you know, North Providence was on the front. And so, but yeah, it does, it levels off. So now that would be going forward.
So are we expected to decrease or increase?
Good question.
Right.
I would always expect it to increase by a small amount. We expect it to, yeah, you might as well stay.
So when we level off, we're going to be held at that same amount every year. So we'll be level funded from the state, and we'll just get that same amount every year. But we've been increasing over the past several years, but next year, you're right, that's the last year we'll get the bump up.
Okay.
So if we end up with a 1.2 million dollar hole in our budget because of a charter school expansion, I think that would be a negative impact.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. DeSilva? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ron.
Every Christmas to everyone, happy new year.
Merry Christmas to you.
Happy holidays.
I just, Mr. President, I just wanted to ask Superintendent Smith if she might be able to come to the mic, please.
Good evening, Superintendent.
Good evening.
We've all been very proud of our schools. We've attended many celebrations and joined with the school department, especially with last year's celebration when the high school achieved the highest graduation rate in the state, as well as our other high performing schools that we're very proud of. The residents expressed their pleasure and their confidence in our school department by approving the 75 million dollar bond to build and improve our existing structures. So that seems to me to be a clear mandate from the residents of their support for our public schools. I would like to ask you, Superintendent Smith, if you could tell us what would need if, if the charter schools are increased, as is the proposal that's being considered, what would the negative impact be to our existing schools and what programs might we see being cut? Are we looking at possibly pay to play for sports? What, what would that translate in practical terms for the impact to our students, if any?
So, so one of the things that we need to think about is that we're starting to add career and tech ed programs to our high school and our middle schools. And that's a big push in education across the board in the nation. And so North Providence was kind of behind on that. We didn't have any programs in place at the high school and at the middle school. And so we've started those programs, those enrichment type programs. The seed money came from grant funding, and then to sustain it, you know, we've added those into our budget. So the first thing that I could see that we're going to have to start to eliminate before sports, I would say are those programs that are the very thing that get, get kids out of bed in the morning to come to school. So those enrichment programs, the expansion of the music program. So when things start to level off because children are being siphoned off the top and going to other schools, it will impact that. I, I agree with you that we are thrilled that the citizens of North Providence have approved that bond. We hope that we're going to have facilities that are going to attract people to stay in town, but there is that risk of children going off to achievement first if that expansion is in place, which could negatively impact those programs that we are right now building up. So I just want to be cautious that, I'd hate to see the Marine Trades Program, you know, go away, or the budding Health Service Program that we're putting in place. So those are the things that would be first to be on the recommendation to cut, and I would hate to see that happen.
Well, as a longtime career educator, I've always been a big supporter of career education, and I've seen, seen how the impact on the lives of students and how it's turned lives around. And I would hate to think that with the good work that's been done in trying to get career ed going in addition to the health, for the Health Science Program with the Nursing Assistant Program, that that may not even be on the radar. So that is a concern I have. There's only so many dollars to go around.
Yeah, I thank the members of the committee for hearing us tonight because I think it's very, Council, it's very important that you are aware that this could impact us negatively. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, did you want to speak?
Thank you for your time. Just, just a couple of things that I'd like to clarify. I think everyone sitting here wants the best education for our children. My problem with getting involved in this is that we're going to be basically halting or dictating to the residents of our town that wish to make an application for one of their children to get into the lottery to attend the charter school. We're going to tell them, no, you can't do that. We're going to tell you where your child is going to go to school. I have an issue with that. So just a couple of things. As far as the, I think the teachers do a great job. I think we have a good school system. Do we need to do better? Absolutely. And I think the question that needs to be answered is, why do some parents want to or want the opportunity to apply to a charter school? Why do they do that? And I think that's because of the performance of a charter school. And I think that what we need to do is we need to figure out a way as to how we can be as good and how we can get our proficiency rates up. And how we can compete to the performance of those schools. Now, I know Mr. DeSilva stated that the city of Warwick and that Mayor Avedizian, I got a copy of a letter, and maybe had a change of heart today, that he is supporting the expansion, so to say. As far as achievement first, we have seven students in our town that, that attend achievement first. I think total, and I stand to be corrected, is we have a total, I thought the last report that I received, and again, I stand to be corrected, we have a total of maybe 57 students in our town that have chosen to attend different chartered schools, charter schools. Now, I'm also of the opinion, we're, we're a small part of this proposal, very, very small. Providence stands to, or they're faced with the most significant impact of this. I think we need to be very, very careful in not to get into, how should I say, maybe fight the fight when we have a limited amount of students that are applying for a position in the charter schools. In the last three years, with the support of this council, we have paid for or picked up a million, 900,000 dollars of school deficits. We have paid for that. We haven't complained about it. We haven't thrown, so to say, thrown the school department under the bus or the school committee. We've paid for it. So I don't know why this is such a, a major issue at this point in time to support this as a major issue. I've talked to some parents that attend the charter school. They like it, they love it. And personally, if any one of our residents as elected officials choose to enter a lottery for that their son or daughter in wish to attend the charter school, then it's our obligation as elected officials to fund it. That's the way I look at this. It's our job to fund it, and we're doing just that. We haven't complained. We've picked up a million, 900,000 dollars of deficits that were, that we inherited from the school department. We have to pay it. That's our obligation. So we're here tonight trying to oppose what some of our taxpayers may want. Look, I think we all, I agree, we all supported the, the school bond. We all supported the school bond. And hopefully, with new schools and renovation of schools, our proficiency rates can come up. I don't want to even get into the numbers. Each and every one of you could check the numbers. There was an op-ed in today's paper from the education director. And there are some numbers in here, I don't even want to get into that. But again, I personally feel, let's look at the town of Cumberland. They have Blackstone Valley Prep. If anybody's been affected by students attending a charter school, it's been the town of Cumberland. Well, they've gone from maybe 25th in a rating, and the public schools now are rated fifth or sixth. The competition has caused the school departments, the public school department, to become better. So my question is, is the answer to a- So my question is, is the answer to a better education to stop it and stick with the status quo? Is that the answer? To me, that's not the answer because I want the best for the students in our town. And as far as I'm concerned, when I look at the numbers, it's all of our job to make it better. By making it us and them or fighting this type of education, in my opinion, I don't think we're doing our job. We have a, a, a right to an opinion. Each and every one of us do. But personally, I do not think the answer to better education or allowing the people that opportunity is to say no. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody else leave a comment further on this subject before we move on? You can.
So, so I had said I didn't want to get into the numbers, but there are, it's not, it's not the same playing field. And if one thinks that the only way we judge schools is by a HOC test or a NECAP test, that's an unfortunate state of affairs. And I can tell you why the charter school is popular because it starts at seven in the morning and you pick them up at six in the afternoon and you don't pay a price for that and that's called free daycare. And I suppose if you're looking for that, they have, they, they offer that. We do have school choice in North Providence. When you buy a home and you pass bonds, that's, that's called school choice. If you recall, I came here and basically said my opposition and my vocalizing of the opposition is not who goes to the school, but who's paying for that school. And I would again suggest that you ask Moody's to come in and do a financial impact of the whole piece and how is that going to affect us? Doesn't matter. You know, I've been a school teacher for 37 years. Don't think I mail it in and I don't think I'm afraid of what the person next to me is doing or the person the other school is doing, the person the other district is doing. We, you know, we stay cutting edge. What I'm saying is, can your budget afford that? And when we talk about funding school department budgets or deficits, those are town deficits. Those are town deficits. If we're not giving to one department what they're looking for and we're taking from another department and putting, those are town deficits. So when we talk about being a community, we're a community in terms of our budgets also, because those would be town deficits. And with the, the school department certainly appreciative of the collaboration between the mayor's office and the school department, but those again are town deficits, they're not school deficits. The, I can't speak to the Cumberland, but I would have a, I, I, I don't see the, the competition as being what's improved it. It has something probably to do with the superintendent and grants and aid and things of that nature. Again, I'm not a believer in that the only way we judge a school is by a, a score on a standardized test, which is run by a corporation, which is designed to make sure we don't do well on those tests, so that corporation continues to get money. I teach an inclusion class. I have special education children in my class. They're never going to pass that test. They're never going to pass that test because that test is not geared to their individual educational program and their learning disability. Now, when the charter school starts, starts taking those kids, the ESL kids, and doesn't put a 15-page document in front of you before you get accepted and say, sign, 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 then we can talk about them being the same as a public school. They're not. They say they're public schools, but they don't treat their students or what's happening in the schools as public schools, whether you want to say it's better or worse. That's not my argument. I'm just addressing some of the things that were brought up. I'm here because it's a budget impact. Whether you want to fight it or not, that's your choi, your choice. I think you have the power of the law. Whether this council wants to take a stand and fight that, that's your choice. You, it is a budget impact and I would, I would really say, go ahead and ask Moody's to do a budget impact and then see what they have to say about it. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't think I will, I am. Right now we'll have, it's a quarter of a million dollars that we're paying and according to Mr. McNamee's numbers, in 10 years it'll be 1.2, 1.3. That's a conservative estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one last thing. I want to just address what Mr. DeSilva said about the, about the budget and the deficits. It's a school deficit. It does become a town deficit, but it was created by the school department, not the municipal side of the budget. And you could check your audits. It's a school deficit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number three, tax stabilization. We received requests from Brenda Del Signori for a discussion and vote for tax stabilization on 1830 and 1840 Mineral Spring Avenue. Ms. Del Signori?
Good evening, Council. My name is Dr. Anthony Farina. I'm the owner of the property located at 1830, 1840 Mineral Spring Avenue. We have been before this council approximately about a year ago asking for a tax stabilization and subsequently referred to the financial committee. The situation at my property at 1840 has become significantly adversarial with the town and I'm here to ask for some tax stabilization to get the property renovated and, and produced for a medical office space. We currently own a property at 1840, 14,400 square feet of office space, which has been closed as a result of some fire exercises on the building done in approximately 2008 without my permission. The building was left in somewhat non, non-inhabitable and vacant conditions.
Dr. Farina, would you just take the microphone out and speak into it?
Sure.
You can take it right out of the stand.
Straight.
There you go. Thank you.
We have been trying to, to conduct ourselves in a positive manner with the town, but we've been met with a lot of, a lot of obstruction. We actually asked for a tax stabilization approximately 14 months ago when we started dealing with the financial committee and were offered a negligible stabilization plan and told us, take it or leave it. As a result of all of this situation, we have attempted to go forward with building and construction and our building plans have been lost six times by the building and building officials' office. We have asked for the as-is built, which includes primary conduit at the property and drainage systems, calculations and such, and we're told they're non-existent. The town does not have them. After our situation with the financial committee, my property was reassessed for 187,000 dollars without a tax, a tax reevaluation. People changed the numbers. I have tried to conduct myself in a very professional manner in this town. Unfortunately, it has not been met with professionalism. I was told approximately two years ago that the mayor was pro-business. We met with the mayor in his office and he told us to proceed with town council. He was in favor of our project. By the time we got to the financial committee, we were told, when the mayor represented himself at the meeting, that he cannot adv, cannot support any type of tax stabilization because it would open up the floodgates. I referenced tax stabilizations that have been conducted in the past, which include Juana's Kattuket properties at 184, a condominium project which will increase 100 residential units, increase trash removal, school taxes, bus services, none of which my property will do. They currently have a tax stabilization which is projected over seven years to go to 12% of its tax value. I am paying 34%. Fatima Hospital had a tax stabilization plan. They are currently paying 6% with no tangible taxes. I am paying 69% tangible taxes. I've tried to deal with this town, as I said, professionally, and I've tried to be compromising. However, compromising doesn't seem to go very far in this town. My property in 2008 had fire exercises conducted when Engine One under Leonard Albanese conducted fire exercises at my property, rappelling off the roof, chopping the facade, breaking glasses, stealing granite, stealing cabinetry. I've had my due process violated in the city. I've been targeted and when I conducted a question to the tax assessor's office about why my property in 2016 was reassessed for 187,000 dollars more, I was told, whoops, it's a mistake. But that mistake didn't happen to anyone else in this town. It happened to me. Your tax stabilization plans, there are none. It's capricious, arbitrary, and it's based on nepotism, in my, in my opinion. I am willing to conduct myself and proceed with the building renovations at 1840, but I am not willing to proceed with the gun to my head. I will not be targeted further. I will not be manipulated as I was when I, when the town council member, Mr. Colloyan, basically had the minutes not recorded at the initial zoning change of the property, which resulted in a purchase of 16 Seaman Avenue behind my building for 300,000 dollars, a property which is assessed at 140,000 dollars. I am tired and I am in quite despair of how this council, I'm sorry, not the council, how this town has conducted itself. I produced a tax stabilization plan based on prior tax stabilization plans that you produced with other people. I've seen the tax stabilizations approved quickly and, and I'm told that, well, we're not talking apples to apples. I'm told that I've been dragging my feet on this property, but yet it took 14 months for the financial committee to come to a decision on my property. Mr. Juisty offered in my tax stabilization that the reevaluation of my property would not be conducted until completion of that property. Mr. Juisty, that is the law. You're not giving me any tax stabilization by doing that.
We gave you, we gave you.
I'm talking about what you said about.
Yeah, we gave you, we gave you a good tax stabilization.
You didn't give me a good stack.
And you turned it down and it's better than the one you, that Juana's Kattuket had.
You didn't give me a good tax stabilization.
And it wasn't 14 months that it took.
It took 14 months.
It was not 14 months. We offered that to you in, in.
Am I allowed to?
Six different meetings.
Am I allowed to speak?
One at a time, one at a time.
Yeah, well, let me finish. Let me finish because you're, you're talking to me now. We allowed it to you for six, for six straight meetings, right? And you turned this down every time and one of your lawyers or one of your representatives told you to take it because it was a good deal and you fired him instead.
My discussions with my lawyer, Mr. Juisty, were not, you were not privy to. You were not privy to those discussions. So I don't know where you're coming up with that fact.
Yeah, well, I got that fact.
Okay, well, as I said, nepotism. I want to know how the town can offer a tax stabilization plan to Juana's Kattuket when they devalued their land value by 50% in 2014 and then devalued their building value by another 50% and then based their tax stabilization for a project of 5 million dollars when it was supposed to be 15 million dollars. I think what's good for the, for the goose is good for the gander. I'm offering to produce a medical office, a premier medical office, an office that I feel is conducted in a way that is well above board with little tax expense to the town. But unfortunately, I come before this council again and, again, trying to be open, but again, the door is closed. I just want to, for the record, come before and tell this council that I will be willing to work in doing this project. However, I do need cooperation. I don't want to be harassed anymore. I refuse to have myself harassed. I've had people go on my site with crowbars breaking in my building without my permission or even asking my opinion as to whether they can enter the building. I presented a tax treaty prior to the town council and to the, to the financial committee that was based on the same aspects of your tax stabilization plans that were offered to Juana's Kattuket.
Um, Dr. Farina, I'd like to thank you for coming here tonight. I've been taking notes while you were speaking. And I do want to preface my remarks by saying I was advised by my zoning attorney who is here tonight that we have to, you know, tread lightly on what we speak about because there is pending litigation between the town and yourself. So, you know, let me just give the council the heads up on that. With that being said, you know, myself being the council president, I'm not required to attend a lot of the committee meetings, but I attended all of them involving your piece of property because I think developing that piece of property is extremely important. The take it or leave it comment in the finance committee, I did not hear that once. I know some of us members on that committee worked diligently to try and come up with a plan. And I will say, I worked with several other council members on the tax stabilization plans for the mill, for Fatima Hospital, and that took, I want to say Fatima Hospital about a year and a half to develop and the mill about a year to develop, of back and forth negotiation. We presented you with a plan and asked you to come back. You did the first time, but then never did the second time. The building plans that goes, lost six times, I can apologize on behalf of the town. We don't deal with the building department and I'm sure you're aware of that. I actually agree with the mayor when he says your property's value, the value of your property, it could open the floodgates for a lot of other buildings, owners of properties to come in looking for tax stabilization plans, which this town may not be able to afford. However, we went against the will of the mayor and proposed you a five-year plan. I think Councilman DeStefano's development, which I thought was very, very fair. With, your attorney at the time came back into the hearing and did tell us he thought that was a very good deal. And I, I mean, I think he, I'm not here to pass hearsay along. I'm just telling you the facts. And Mr. Colloyan you spoke of about buying the property, he is not a council member. I don't know where you came up with that. I, I don't.
He was a council member in 2007.
Never.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't know who that is.
And, you know, the last thing we're trying to do is violate your due process. I'm a business owner. There's several business, business owners up here. We want that property developed. Trust me. So with that being said, if we want to renegotiate, retry this again, this process again. So with that being said, if we want to renegotiate, retry this again, this process again, I'm open for that. Why not? I think, Councilman DeStefanis, did you have a comment?
Thank you for coming. You know, I agree with what the council president states. We, we on the finance committee took the proposal seriously. And from day one, we made it known that we were only going to do an agreement on the new construction aspect of the property. The existing building was not ever part of the equation. And if I'm correct to say, that was the reason the night you walked away, because it wasn't the full property. And that's what we were led to believe. But in my opinion, I think this council has gone above and beyond to try to get that piece of property. We never even canceled it out of the finance committee. It's still open, waiting for you to come back. And the comment about the 14 months, I've only been on this council about two years. This month, you know, January 1 will be two years. I only received this last year. So, you know, prior to that, I don't know where you were, but you weren't with us.
I was at the mayor's office. We went to the council meeting, and then we went to finance committee.
And just to set the record straight, I understand that you're comparing all the tax stabilization agreements in the town. But the mill is new construction. Well, renovation, they are ripping it, the majority of it down. It's not 5 million. The bank note on the property's 12 million. So it is a substantial investment.
He actually testified 15 million.
Again, again, I don't know how much of the owner's money is involved in that. But what I'm telling you is, in order to make that bank note work, that was the proposal sent to us from the bank. So... To make it clear, you stated earlier it was 5 million.
I said the tax stabilization was based on a 5 million evaluation.
Okay.
According to the mill, he has a seven-year stabilization plan. Year one, he pays $33,000.
Correct.
Year two, he pays $33,000. Year three, $38,000. Year four, $77,000. Year five, $115,000. Year six, $154,000. Year seven, $193,000. Based on a 35, 34.5% tax rate, that comes out to a valuation of $5.7 million. If you base the tax rate on $193,000 on $15 million, that comes to a 12% tax rate when this is all said and done.
Okay. You want to speak, Kelly?
I don't know, I don't know about the council members, but I feel somewhat uneasy at paying 34.5% on my tax rate, and he's paying 12% on his. I also feel, I also feel, I also feel that tangible taxing of 69.7%... 69.7% tangible taxes I'm paying, and Fatima Hospital's paying zero.
When did you buy the building, if you don't mind me asking?
What's, I'm sorry?
When did you buy the property you're currently...
The property was purchased in 2007.
Okay, so that building's been sitting there?
No, that building was not sitting...
Since 2007?
That building was occupied when I purchased it.
Okay, when did you close it down?
I closed it down approximately 2008 mid.
Okay, so from 2008 to 2016...
May I finish, Mr. DeStefanis?
What's the reason why the building hasn't been built?
In 2008, we were to renovate that building. They hooked up, the fire department, Engine One hooked up, steel chains to that front door, busted in, and did fire activities. They did everything about burn the building down.
No.
Yes, they did.
That's not true.
That is true.
And you know it's not.
That is true.
Please.
That is very true.
That's not true at all.
Very true. And some of my cabinetry is actually in Engine, in Engine One Fire Station.
Okay, so I, one last question. So basically, the building's been there since you've owned it, and you haven't renovated it because of all the problems the town has caused you. From the fire department entering it, to nepotism, to the building department losing the plan six times, which again, as the council president stated, none of those departments answer to us. So I, just to make that clear, and again, as I stated to you at the committee meeting, my first committee meeting, that was before me. And I think we put together a fair proposal.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Brenda Del Signori.
Thank you.
We did meet with the council several times. And it's times like this, Mr. Juisty, that it becomes very difficult to deal with the council. Your mannerism, your actions, the way that you tell us that we're lying is inappropriate. It's very inappropriate. We're here to discuss a tax stabilization. I'm not here to call somebody a liar or say it wasn't true. These have been, these have been... Please, let me finish. Let me finish. I'm in the middle of my conversation, please. We've come to you several times, and it's been ongoing. And it's not just one situation, it's several situations. It's multiple situations. It's dating back to Ed Savito. I mean, I realize that they're not on the council right now, or they're not working in the town right now, but you have to take this all into consideration of what we've been going through over the last eight years. Does anybody see this or hear this? Regardless if it's in a litigation or not, this has been ongoing. You guys need to open your eyes and listen. This is crazy.
He's saying, he's saying that the fire department...
They did do that.
Is short of burning the place down. Now, come on, you know that's not true.
They were pulled off the side of the building. They chopped up the side, they broke every window, chopped every door in that building. I have pictures.
Okay, but the bottom line is here, this council, this finance committee, which would have been referred to this full council, offered what we believe was a fair tax stabilization plan, which was then told by people on your side that they thought it was pretty good. And that's not hearsay.
I'm not privy to any conversation that it was...
But that's not, we're not...
That's number one. Number two, that was without my authorization. Number three, this discussion did not involve me. And I think that if anyone's going to think that this is a fair stabilization plan, it should be coming from my mouth, not from someone else's mouth.
The person representing you said it, though.
But he shouldn't have been discussing things without my knowledge.
Can I call the town zoning attorney to the microphone, please?
Mr. President, I have a question.
I'm going to have Councilman McAtansar make a statement, and then I'd like to hear from Kelly Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. In our Economic Development Committee, Councilwoman Brady and I, we had had a meeting, and we talked about making fair proposals. And it seems, and I have to agree, if something is given to someone that is different, it's not fair and it's arbitrary. And I think what this council really has to look at from January forward is some type of uniform system. I've said it before, but it's not going to stop with this building here. There's going to be someone else who says, well, if Wenosquatucket got that, Dr. Farina got this, why can't I get this? This council needs to look at a one-year window of construction. And they need to offer that to anyone in the town that wants to construct, erect a new building, refurbish, renovate. If they don't do it within that year, that's what's going to stimulate economic development in this town. If you give it a window, it's not forever. You say, well, we can't afford it in the future. It opens the floodgates for, well, make the floodgates a short period of time. Because once it ends in five years or seven years, look at all the economic development you had. But if we sit up here and we know it's not fair, and I do agree with Dr. Farina, it's not fair. I voted against Wenosquatucket only because this is what was going to happen. The basis for the numbers did not lend the next person to have a fair shot. And here we are, my last meeting, still fighting for someone here in this town to have a fair shot. And it will happen all day long. And that is what this town council has to do. You need to do it, and you need to do it fast because there are others that are going to come and ask for the same thing. It's about being fair and equitable to every single business owner, resident person, to do the same for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. As I think all of you know, my name's Kelly Morris. I'm the Assistant Solicitor for Zoning Planning and Building Matters. So as you said, Council President, we are in litigation on this matter. And clearly, by what I've heard from you tonight, you're clearly a council that wants to talk with property owners. But unfortunately, in this case, we are in litigation. So at this point, I would advise you not to engage in conversations about tax stabilization until we resolve this matter. And I just want to give you a status on where this matter is. On November 23, we had a conference with the Superior Court. An order to remediate, honored before December 12, was approved by the court. You can ask the owner if any of that work has been done yet. My understanding is nothing has been done yet. We will be going back for another status conference on the 13th, which is only a week away. So, just laying out the facts. I also want to defend our town employees. We certainly take a different position on several of the statements that have been made tonight. You have to, the facts again. A demolition permit was pulled by this property owner in 2008. As you probably know, oftentimes, when a building is about to be demolished by a property owner, the fire department will ask the property owner if they can do certain exercises. That's what happened. The fire department requested permission, was given permission. By the way, if they were doing all these things that the property owner is saying that they did, wouldn't they have called the police? Wouldn't they have gone to court to try to stop this? There are holes in the roof. I've seen the building.
Mr. President, I thought we weren't supposed to be talking about this. You just came up and made a statement that we need to be cautious about what we're talking about, and...
That's not what I said.
Uh, yes, you did. So you're talking about what's in litigation, so I think we shouldn't be talking about that.
But let me be clear, I'm sorry, Councilwoman. What I said was, I would advise you not to engage in conversations about the tax stabilization agreement as this matter is in litigation. That's not about what happened. And I'm correcting what the property owner said. I would think the council would want to hear from your town on the facts of the matter. May I continue, Mr. President? Thank you. With regard to lost plans, I've heard this allegation before. The plans have always been at the building official's office. This has been going on, you've got to understand, since 2008. So this has been going on for a very long time. He also mentioned that we entered onto the property illegally. That is not the case. The building official has the authority to enter into the building. And we've gotten, nothing has happened with the court on that. There's absolutely...
Not yet.
Okay, but nothing has happened with the court. It was, it was done legally. And then finally, I would just encourage the council to review the planning board's docket over the last at least couple of years since I've been representing the planning board because many, many buildings have gone up in this town approved by the planning board. And, you know, it's not through any stabilization agreements or anything like that, so... If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to...
Does anybody have any questions for attorney? Morris? Thank you.
Ms. Morris is in error in a few things that she mentioned. Number one, no one, no property owner ever gave permission to the fire department to break and enter my building. No one gave anyone permission...
Doctor, you have to address the council.
I'm sorry. No one gave anyone permission to break and enter my building, to do any type of, to break in with a crowbar back in October. The situation is, the value of my application was never given the appropriate look. That's how I feel. Secondly, in order for someone to enter a building, there has to be threat of harm and/or permission given by the property owner or a court order, none of which were ever obtained. And nothing was, nothing in terms of threat of harm was ever proposed. They actually broke in in the middle of an afternoon. They broke into the rear quarter of my building on a Friday afternoon at approximately 2:00. The witness statement from a police officer basically said that Mail and Body stated that they needed to gain access to the interior vacancy of the building to take pictures. That's not threat of personal harm. Mail and Body felt that if Dr. Farina observed this, then he would attempt to stop them and cause a problem. No one ever asked my permission. Mail and Body stated to me, the official that's writing this report, that the legal right to do what they were doing, that they had the legal right to do what they're doing. And why did the officer there for security purposes? They proceeded using a crowbar and hammer to enter the building to take pictures. I'm sorry, counsel, I'm sorry. If I did something like that, I would be arrested. Okay? And this is the same permission that Mrs. Kelly is referencing in 2008 when I had a fire department hook up steel chains to my front door and pull the doors off the building and chop up the interior of the building. This is, this is the bubble gum gangster acts that are going on in the town.
Well, I thank you for coming, doctor. And this council isn't in the position to say what's true, what's not true, judge who's right, who's wrong. I think this council's concerned with... I think the concern of this council is resolving the situation at 1840 Mineral Spring Avenue. And whether that building has to come down or be rebuilt, that's all we want to see. So after the litigation is resolved, if we want to go back to negotiations, I think everyone up here would be open to that. We'll see going forward, but we have to resolve this litigation first. So I thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I have number four, rat infestation proposal. Receive request from Brian Quirk, from self and other residents to voice their concern and put forth a proposal to provide a safe environment free from fear of large-scale rat infestation. Mr. Quirk?
My name is Brian Quirk. Mr. President, before we start, I was wondering if I could hand out some packets on there for the council members. Within that packet, it's just some information that we put together about rats themselves, facts, identification, control, rat want diseases, rat diets, what actually attracts them. Also along with that, a chart here that I'll get to in just a few minutes. Why I'm here, I've been invited here today by some residents of the San Diego and Greystone area to speak on their behalf about an issue that they feel continues to be neglected to this day. That issue's about the rats that have infested their neighborhood. Despite the belief that the issue is an isolated case, many residents that I've spoken with from Maryville, Fruit Hill, Geneva, Lyman'sville, Greystone, all have raised concerns about the rat problem. about the rat problem. Despite the numerous complaints from residents concerned about the growing rat problem, this administration continues to handle the situation with a half-hearted approach. And why, in my opinion, because unfortunately, it became a much-publicized topic throughout the election, resulting in the mayor taking a reactive approach, rather than a proactive approach, to resolving the situation. After speaking to representatives of two reputable, different pest control agencies, we all can agree that the primary cause of the increase of rats in North Providence is because of the excessive food sources throughout the town. Identifying the food source has obviously been one of the steps to eradicating the problem. However, it cannot be the only step. There are many more steps that need to be taken if we ever hope to eradicate the problem. Without a multi-phased approach, the town of North Providence could possibly encounter a major rat infestation, exposing us all to a serious health risk. Now, the chart that is in your packet provides one extreme example of just how severe the problem could become if appropriate and complete action is not taken. And again, a hypothetical situation as far as that chart goes. So, before discussing my proposal to provide a safe environment, free from the peril of full-blown rat infestation in North Providence, there are some town residents who would like to say just a few words and share their experiences, and also present a petition.
Just state your name for the record, please.
Tammy Jakes.
Thank you.
I live Nineby Street. I drew up this petition and had all my neighbors sign it, that I have any problems with these rats, which I also have several pictures of, and pictures of how they're getting inside my house, and just the basic streets, when you walk outside your house, what you see. The petition reads, "We, the citizens of the town of North Providence, Rhode Island, petition the town to immediately distribute throughout Greystone and Sunnadale area of town new-covered 96-gallon trash tote containers as part of the multi-phase approach to controlling the rat infestation throughout the neighborhoods. We strongly urge that the town fully fund the distribution of trash receptacles in order to eliminate the financial burden that continues to cost residents a great deal of time and money, as well as adverse effects on our quality of life. We strongly urge the town exercise its authority under the town charter and adopt and attach the proposed titled, "Multi-Phase Approach," submitted to the town of North Providence, and immediately take action in order to counteract the growing rat infestation and the possibility of exposing the town to a serious health risk." Now, I have pictures of what I see when I walk out my door, which are dead rats in the middle of the road. I have pictures of the big giant holes they are burrowing into my house. And I have pictures of the 10 rats that I have killed inside my house. I have come face-to-face with a rat a foot long with about an inch, inch-and-a-half-sized teeth. He was a foot from my face. And I was shaking, I didn't know what to do, and this is where the problem started. I called Mail and Body's office, I never received a call back. I called New Center 10, I went on the news. I immediately got a call from him, 9:00 the next morning. "Why didn't you call my office?" I said, "Well, Mayor, I did call your office, I never got a return call, and several of my neighbors also called, and they never got return calls." Then I said, "Well, let me see if my district councilman would help me." So, I called Mr. Juisty, and he said, "I didn't know what the hell I was talking about, and I was the one that was leaving garbage outside, bringing these rats to the house." So, that they were going to have my house inspected. So, the mayor immediately called me after I hung up with him, and said, "Well, you people leave your garbage everywhere, and this is why the rats are coming." And I'm like, "You could send the inspector over to my house anytime you like." The next morning, 8:00 AM, Anthony Tadino from Andy Pest Elimination was at my house. Came throughout my house, went all over my yard, took pictures of everything, and found nothing there that was in my house that could have brought these rats there. Now, these rats are living inside my walls, my ceilings, and they're burrowing in through my yard. And the pictures will speak for itself. I have killed all the rats that are inside my home, and right now, I kind of freaked out a couple of weeks ago and just threw poison everywhere, inside my walls, inside my attic, inside my basement, inside everywhere, and that's what I did not want. I was trying to trap them, there was just way too many of them. I was finding them floating in my pool, floating in, you know, anything that had water outside. I have pictures of them all. And I have gotten rid of all of them, but right now, there are dead rats inside my walls and ceilings that I can't get to. And my house smells like a dead rat. I've been there for eight years, I never had a problem with rats at all. I have, you know, some of my neighbors, they've been there 11 years, 38 years, never, ever had a problem. And now, all of a sudden, we all have rats. And these rats were from somewhere. They didn't, like, come from my neighbors, but they were from somewhere because they are huge. The biggest one I got was a foot long, like I said, and he was a foot from my face. He ate his way through my foundation, and we came face-to-face in my basement, and I almost had a heart attack. And then, when I called for help, I literally got no response, except for being blamed that it was my fault that they were there.
Now, you know what, you've got this is a serious health risk. The individuals like Tammy going through this, okay? This affects quality of life. We haven't identified a food source in that area, and it has been addressed through, what was the citation that they sent?
Mike Caravalli was sent by Mail and Body over there to do an inspection. And we literally found anywhere between 50 and 70 rat burrows inside the wall where this apartment complex is, and they leave the dumpster open, and garbage is overflowing, and the rats eat right through the plastic, right into the dumpster. He was told to replace the dumpster with a metal dumpster. And now, I guess, Mike went out there again last week, and now he has to move the dumpster and put an enclosure around it. And that's, they, I learned a lot about rats, I did a lot of research, seeing as though they were so close to home, I wanted to figure out what was going on, and how fast they multiply, and so on and so forth, and what their habits were. And this is how I caught them by hand with the little wooden traps, because they're creatures of pattern. They go the same way every time. If they see something unfamiliar in their path, they won't go that path anymore, they'll make another path. So, you have to kind of trick them. And that's what I've been doing, and that's how I caught 10 of them, on the wooden traps.
Now, the other thing, too, on your chart, and you see the facts, that first of all, you identified a type of rat. The rat in this town itself has been identified as a Norway rat, and that itself makes year-round. Now, the Norway rat would produce about 50 to 60 pups per year. Unrealistic in the real world, because, you know, you're going to have natural predators, everything else, that, you know, the poisons and traps and whatnot, but still. Here's the thing, even if you took a small percentage of that, and you multiply it over the time, since we've had the quarmo, okay? We have the potential to probably have at least two-point core rats per resident at this point, which would have equated to 82,319 female rats, hypothetically speaking. Because I say 2007, because we've had this problem, and in the packet itself, you have an article here from the Post-Providence Police, stating that this problem was down on Charleston, I believe it was, okay? In Fruit Hill, spreads to Fruit Hill and beyond. Here's the deal, the problem is, first of all, we have to accept the fact that there is a problem. I was invited here by these individuals, because I met them, I got involved, but since that time, and what's transpired, you're only a street away now from where I live. And I see them actually run over on the street on Douglas Ave. So, they are around town, and they've been even spotted up at the Park at 95. So, before this thing really gets out of hand, it's just, again, if you would take the time and maybe take into consideration, the multi-phase approach that we do have in the packet itself, some ideas, but also, if anyone else here would like to speak, do you want these back?
My name's Pam Izzy. I live behind the house...
Say your name again.
Pam Izzy.
Thank you.
My, I live behind, on the side of the house that the food source was identified as...
You live on the side?
I live on the side of it. The house that was identified is 1 Helen Street, and I live on 4 Clark Street.
So, is this the apartment complex you're speaking of?
It's apartment complex. The apartment is here, and I'm right here.
Okay.
So, he's got the dumpster up against the back wall, which is very close to my backyard. I can't use my backyard in the evenings now, because I'm afraid of the rats. And I have a dog who refuses to go in the yard in the nighttime because the rats are out there. And it's affecting my quality of life. I moved here in February, about four years. I wanted to move to North Providence. I did not want to move into a rat-infested neighborhood. I didn't spend good money on my house to be unable to use all of what I paid for.
Can Councilman Juisty just ask you a question?
Can I ask you a question?
I'm sorry?
Dumpster, in the back of your property, right?
Yes.
Does he keep that messy? Is it dirty?
They leave it open, and the rats can jump into it.
What about on the ground? On the ground, do they leave it...
They have left it on the ground. I called Mike Caravalli at the housing inspector's office, and he went out there last week and told the gentleman that owns the property that he has to move the dumpster from where it is to another location on his property, and put a three-sided fence around it, and put more traps out, and bait them for the rats. As of yet, he has done none of that.
Okay.
It passed the fence, I went out and actually, eventually saw this dumpster. It was up against a property, and it was well than, not even 10 feet away, and it was open, trash was overflowing. There are all ruined burrow holes, because it's on a side hill almost, and if you go right...
It's a walkie-hill.
But see, there's the problem. Once again, that's their feeding ground.
Yes, it is their feeding ground.
And once you get rid of their feeding ground, and they don't have anything to eat, they start eating each other.
We understand that, and we've done all the research on it.
Yeah. And that's our big problem now, is we have to get that dumpster straightened out, not... You know what I'm saying?
Well, they're also chewing through other neighbors' garbage cans that they have, that we say you buy at Lowe's. They chew holes through the bottom of them. They, one of my neighbors, some of our neighbors are embarrassed to come here, because they feel like they're at fault for the rat problems in their yard. They're embarrassed, so they're not here with us. Their names are on the petition, but they're not here because they're embarrassed. They feel like they're dirty, they're not. That's not the case at all. This was not a problem four years ago when I moved in. This just became a problem this year, and it's getting worse as the days go by. And they're starting to dig holes in my side yard, and that's affecting my lawn. I try to keep my lawn up, I'm getting holes dug in my yard, and towards my foundation. I don't want them in my house like Tammy has them in her house. And like I said, I can't go spend the evening in my backyard with my husband, and my dog, and my great-grandson, because I'm afraid that a rat might come and bite him. And who's going to pay the medical bills if a child gets bit from these rats? Something needs to be done, and it needs to be done soon, because they're getting out of control. And it's just getting worse, it's not getting better.
Can we make, can I make a recommendation that we send a letter? You talked to Mike Caravalli?
I did talk to Mike Caravalli.
Can we send a letter to Mike Caravalli to go back to the gentleman, I guess?
He told the gentleman he had a couple of weeks to take care of the situation.
When did he come out there?
Last week.
All right, so he's got a few more days.
He's got a few more days. As of yet, he has done not a thing.
All right, if he doesn't have anything done within the two-week period, contact the clerk's office, and I recommend, make a recommendation, we send a letter to Mike Caravalli to go back out there and straighten this guy out. Because that's where you're going to start. You're going to have to start on stuff like that, because that's where they eat, and that's what makes them...
Right. But, and I request that we also get the containers that Tammy requested. I can't, I moved here from Windsocket, which some areas of Windsocket are not the greatest areas to live in, and unfortunately, I lived in the housing project areas. They had the containers Tammy's talking about, and we lived by the river. We did not have a rat problem where I moved from. I lived in the Fairmount district, which is close to the Blackstone River, which is loaded with rats and whatnot. We didn't have a rat problem, because we had the proper trash containers that the city provided, along with the recycle bins that this city provided us with. We're just asking for the proper trash receptacles to keep the rats out of them, and to keep them from chewing through them.
Councilman Kelly, do you want to...
Well, the rats are just going to chew right through those barrels as well. If we remove that dumpster, these rats are going to move to other parts of the neighborhood and look for another food source.
I just want to say, we were speaking about, we also opened a couple more harnesses, and they are addressing the rats as well. We're going to get to that. The same guy? The same guy? No, has Mike...
My name's John Cardoza.
Has Mike Caravalli gone to that?
I live right across the street from the...
Just state your name again, sir.
The housing complex.
Please state your name.
Sir, sir, just say...
John Cardoza.
Thank you.
I live right across the street from the housing complex, and I was sitting outside one day, and I seen something run by, I didn't know what it was. The next day, I was sitting out there with my wife, having a drink, she's telling me a story about, my wife's a nurse, and she's telling me a story about what happened at work, and she starts screaming out of nowhere. I'm like, "What's the matter with you?" She's like, "You didn't see that?" I said, "What?" The rat came through my yard, down my stairs, right through my yard. So, the next day, I started buying rat traps and poison, started poisoning, I was finding rats everywhere. It's crazy, you know? I've been there 11 years. I got, I'm 49 years old, I got a four-year-old and an 11-year-old. I don't need my kids getting bit by this. The landlord that owns the apartment house, I made him change the dumpster, because they were eating the plastic doors right off this thing. There's burrows all over the side of his house. I said, "You have to do something." The inspector came, looked at it, he's like, "This place has never been baited, there's about 70 holes everywhere. You want to come by my house, have a drink with me, and you'll see them." I mean, what I, we need is some dumpsters, some trash cans. I went out and bought the biggest one, just like the recycling bin. They ate all my trash bags, I mean, my trash cans. This is just getting sickening, you know? Pay a lot of taxes, I've been there 11 years. North Providence is great, the schools are great. I don't plan on going anywhere, but I need these rats taken care of. That's my main concern, that's the only reason why I'm here.
Thank you.
So...
It sounds like the neighborhood's going to need professional help. I mean, just buying poison at Lowe's or something, that's not going to do it.
Well, she said that Tadino went out there, she...
I got rat traps everywhere.
We did speak with Mr. Tadino, he's been at this, he's been at this, it goes back to 2007, when he walked Charleston, he saw what had happened. People actually will take plastic bags of trash and then hunt signs, and we had, that creates a food source, see how we understand that? There's a lot of people, certain areas, they just can't go out and get those 96-gallon big trucks. A lot of the neighboring towns, he had all my traffic. But like that, you know, that isolated house such as John isn't going to stop the problem either. This is a, this is a, in effort, everybody has to get involved.
On top of that, now, my neighbor, my neighbor gave his house back to the bank, he's out, so they're probably living in his house right now. He got sick in North Providence, bought himself another house, he knew the problem was there. I never knew the problem until a few months ago, until I spotted it. You know, now it's a big problem. Something needs to be done about it, you know?
Would I have the, just some things that we go over, you know, over John's chart, or maybe some things, it could be relevant, like maybe you could get from the chart, and we could get maybe some help from the town itself?
Yep.
If he could see that, and maybe it is applicable, and get smart. I feel it might be, look, residents, this is pretty much throughout the town. And, uh, we're not at a level yet where it's a health risk, but it could be. We're coming into the cold winter months now. They're looking to get into the homes.
There's daycare right on the side of me. That's, you know, you don't know if they're in there either.
John, show me, uh, a few homes now that have, but these things actually chew through bricks. I mean, depending on the age of the house, there comes a certain amount of damage.
What's your, what's your address again?
Right from the foundation. They come right from the...
Excuse me?
Your address again.
My address?
Yeah, yeah, where you live.
Uh, to Helen Street.
Helen Street.
The only house on the street.
What is it? Helen Street, yeah.
But there are reputable, uh, you know, businesses, restaurants down in that area too. They're very concerned too. Uh, they're embarrassed about it also. I've spoken to somebody, uh...
Speak to my neighbors. They don't wanna come, because they're embarrassed. They say, "This is a mess neighborhood." And, you know, school is good. That's why we picked that area over there. And all of a sudden, I've been there eleven years, this is the only, uh, non-problem with rats.
I had one thing I wanted to mention, um, the bee traps, um. I am friends with a few people on minimum housing in cities that surround this city, and they have all put those big giant black bee traps off of the rats, and they're catching a lot of the rats. Now, if all the surrounding cities are putting those up, and they're catching their rats, they're gonna come central, because there's nothing here stopping them. You know, and, and that's the bee I threw in my house, because I, 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 I freaked out. I had enough of these rats. I heard them. They wake me up at night fighting inside my vents. They sound like cats, funny. Yeah, he came over. He helped me one day. He, he just...
I was looking at him. I said, "Wow, what you doing?" I hit him over the head. I pulled him off. It was just great.
I think it's in the floor.
Yeah, and they're actually living in my house. When I'm sleeping, I don't know if they're even crawling on my bed.
Mr. President.
Councilman.
Several months ago, uh, when we had people from Monasqueta Tucket, Allen Avenue, uh, Damian Court, this council voted for an emergency ratification plan. It was very publicized. I think everyone will remember that. We, as a council, all voted for that, and we identified that there was a problem. So, we're at fault, and, and I'm going to say it. Back then, this council identified, and we sent something to the mayor's office, telling him, and it was too much of an embarrassment for him to handle it. He cared more about the people that didn't have them. And I'm sorry, because I know I spoke with you, and every single call that had rats was referred to me to call me. That's all I did, was talk to people about their rats all summer. And you know what? It's a problem. We know it. And this right here, we should be embarrassed, because we voted for that. And if we don't vote and send that again, and have it done, i- i- it's just an, an embarrassment.
My take for the amount of taxes that we pay to live in North Providence, we should not even have a conversation about a rat or issue.
I agree, and part of that emergency ratification plan would be to put out the bait traps.
Right, right.
That's what it would be.
What, uh, Councilman Jussey did bring up about the bait traps, I should put them out. I did reach out to, uh, to very reputable pest control agencies, if you will. I did speak with them. The problem with that is, people that are putting out these poisons, these bait traps, they're really not that educated about it, and it is dangerous in itself. We've actually gone down, we saw, uh, I believe it was Mr. Caravalli instructed the owner of the complex building to put the bait traps in all these burrows that are flooded with your property.
Right.
They were all done wrong, and I can say that confidently, because, uh, Mr. Toldino, he is the owner of, uh, AT Pest Control over at the Tucket. He actually here, and they were done wrong. That's, that's one of the problems. We need some people who know what they're doing to help with the multi-phase approach to eradicate, uh, these, this problem.
Let me ask you another question. Toldino, what, what did he actually do when he came up here? Did he do anything?
It was actually the town that called him in, but...
I know that, but what did he do?
Excuse me?
Physically, what did he do?
He put it, he just, no, no, he didn't give a contract.
So he didn't do anything?
So he just came and looked?
He just came and looked and said he got rats?
Yeah, he identified it as a rat problem.
You said it.
I don't want that, honestly, huh?
No, I've done it any day.
No.
He's like, "This place hasn't been baited for years. This is where it holds you right now."
Yeah, just added.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm, just let me get this in. I wanna, I wanna make a motion right now, that we have Mr. Caravalli here, um, next, next meeting. I'd also like to add Mr. Toldino to that, since he's been going to this place. I'd like to have him here at next month's meeting. So, that's, that's a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Jussey, seconded by Councilwoman Canzaro and Feola. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
Please take into consideration some of the ideas that already just come up.
Thank you. Thank you for putting that together.
Thank you.
One last question. What would be the chances of me getting those ninety-six gallon homes, if not across the town, and if we wanna call it an isolated case, maybe we could use them as an isolated case to test it out? Maybe we could, because, look, those rats are there, and I've seen them.
They're, they're gonna eat.
If you go into that apartment complex building at night, and you're quiet, John, right, you put the lights on your car, and all you see, the whole side of that land, or all the beauty little eyes looking at me right back at you, it, it is, it is pretty sickening.
Those, those bins, though, they'll eat right through those, too.
Well, you know, that's the whole thing. I, I don't think, like you said, they'll, they'll start, at, at least it's a step forward. They'll start eating themselves, and, you know, they're, they're... At least it will be another step toward it. It, it's a multi-phase approach, and I believe it's, it's needed. Please consider those, and I know that the trunks that are left, it's here tonight.
They have them last day.
He advocated for the ninety-six gallon drums, so hopefully, you'll become an advocate of this group, and help out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quin.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, item number five. Off-leash dog park. Councilwoman Brady requests discussion and possible vote with regard to the establishment of an off-leash dog park in the town of North Providence. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. At last month's meeting, we voted to send a letter to the administration asking them for consideration for the use of some town property to use as an off-leash dog park, and asking them to get back to us before tonight's meeting. We didn't hear back from the administration, but I did learn through the media that the administration plans on putting a dog park next to the future animal shelter on Smithfield Road. Uh, and since that article came out through, in the media, I did hear from a number of residents who, uh, were happy to hear that the administration was open to putting a dog pla- park in place in the town, but were disappointed that it was to be at the, uh, perimeter of the town, on the Smithfield line, uh, rather than in a, a location that's more centrally located and more desirable, rather than being placed near a salvage yard, which is fine for an animal shelter, because that's a temporary place for the animals to live until they're adopted. Whereas people want to bring their dogs to a dog park for the purpose of socializing with, with their pets, and they were hoping that, uh, as I said, a more desirable place could be found, uh, of town property, if the mayor would consider that. So I'm gonna make a motion that we send another letter to the administration asking for reconsideration, uh, in a placement for an off-leash dog park in an area that's more centrally located and more desirable. So moved.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Feola. Is there any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number six. Community Recycle Day. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote regarding creating a community recycle day. Councilman?
Mr. President, uh, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to the recycling coordinator to create an event that would provide the residents an opportunity to manage a variety of special wastes re- through reuse, recycling, or safe disposal. Um, such items that the residents might be able to drop off is paint, uh, thinners, batteries, um, pesticides, cleaners. Uh, m- many communities around us have shred it come in, so the residents can bring, you know, documents that they don't wanna leave around the house or throw away, because it might have personal information on it. Um, there's actually a lot of items and a lot of companies that the town could bring in on these days that could really help to keep, one, our neighborhoods clean, and two, help our residents out. So I make a motion to send a letter to the recycling coordinator to create potentially two events per year.
Second.
We do have, we have, um, when we have the farmer's market, we do have companies that come in. We don't have a particular day, but I support it.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Canzaro. Any other questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven. Resignation letter. Received a letter of resignation to be accepted with regret from Barry Shilla from the North Providence Environmental Commission. Dear North Providence Town Clerk, Mary Ann, this is my notification that I am resigning from the North Providence Environment Commission. This has to do with my caregiving responsibilities and my family, and also some discouragement about the environmental prospects due to the results of the national election. I still care for North Providence, but as an original member of the commission, perhaps it's time for a younger and more energetic member to take over. I thank the town government for giving me the, the opportunity to have served on the commission. My sincere best wishes to all. Barry Shilla. Like to entertain a motion to accept this letter?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mr. President, but I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Shilla for all his service. He was a very active member of the Environmental Commission. He's served on other committees over the years. A retired professor from Rhode Island College, and very, very generous with his time. So, thank you for your service, Mr. Shilla.
I agree with that.
I concur.
Thank you. Thank you for stating that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight. Resignation letter. Received a letter of resignation to be accepted with regret from Stephen DiLorenzo, DiLorenzo Senior from the North Providence Housing Authority. Dear President Odiello, distinguished members of the town council, I would like to submit my resignation as com- as a commissioner for the North Providence Housing Authority. My service over the last eighteen years has been rewarding, and I look back on my time with a great sense of accomplishment. I appreciate the opportunity to serve, and will look back in with fond memories. My resignation will take effect on January first, two thousand seventeen. Sincerely, Stephen DiLorenzo Senior, North Providence Housing Authority. I'd like to entertain a, entertain a motion to accept this letter?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine. Board appointments. Town council discussion and action with regard to the appointments made to the following boards. North Providence Housing Authority. June DiLorenzo, dear honorable town council, I would like to respectfully submit my name and nomination for the position of Commissioner of the North Providence Housing Authority. I have been a proud town resident for the past twenty-eight years. My professional experience and community service background gives me the skill set to serve on such a distinguished board. I would greatly appreciate your consideration on this appointment. Sincerely, June DiLorenzo. Do I have a motion to appoint June DiLorenzo?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Jussey. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Board of Tax Review. Hello, my name is David Santilli. I am interested in joining the Board of Tax Review. During the town council meeting last month, Council President Odiello mentioned two positions that needed to be filled. I am a lifelong resident of the North, of North Providence, and interested in getting involved with the town. I have attached my resume for review. Thank you, David Santilli.
Make a motion to appoint David to the tax.
Second.
You think we should have him come up here and ask him some questions? Alright. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Jussey, seconded by Councilwoman Canzaro. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. C. Historic District Commission. Please see two letters attached.
Okay, we have, uh, Mr. Richard Britto, who is, no longer lives in the town. We sent him a certified letter, and he did not respond. So I'd like to entertain a motion to remove Mr. Britto from the Historic District Commission.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President, I did get a letter today from someone on the committee. Um, they emailed me, so I'll just put it in the record too, about him not being there, and then recommending this person
Okay.
for the board.
Okay, I'll read, uh, "Dear Mr. Odiello and Town Council, as a former member of the original North Providence Historic District Commission, NPPC, I would like to be considered to fill the recently vacated position. I have lived in North Providence for over twenty years, and would like to make sure that the integrity and beauty of its historic districts are maintained with pride and dignity. In addition, I feel it is important to help people make decisions about their properties, so the future owners will want to preserve them. If you have any questions, feel free to co- contact me. Sincerely, Beverly Burgess."
No, it was just a recommendation also from someone on the board asking for us to appoint her additionally.
Do I have a motion to appoint Beverly Burgess?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Do I entertain a motion for the town clerk to advertise for the Environmental Commission?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilwoman Canzaro. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number ten. Introduction of Ordinance sixteen dash zero one two, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-one, article five, to add section thirty-one dash twenty-four of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled "Abandonment of Highways, Driveways Procedure." Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance sixteen dash zero one two?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eleven. Introduction of Ordinance sixteen dash zero thirteen, an ordinance amending chapter nineteen, article ten, section nineteen forty-seven A of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled "Three-way Stop Signs", to provide for a three-way stop sign at the intersection of Plymouth Road and Don Avenue. Do I have a motion to introduce ordinance sixteen dash zero thirteen?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilwoman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twelve. Finance Committee Report. Town council with discussion and action with regard to the Finance Committee Report, to be presented by Councilwoman DeStefanis. Councilman?
Mr. President, uh, the minutes are attached with notes on every single, uh, vote. Um, I ask that the minutes be submitted as is.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Jussey. Any se- any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirteen. Tax Addendas. Town council discussion and action with possible vote with regard to the list of tax addenda received from ta- acting tax assessor in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-two cents for real estate, and one thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-four cents for motor vehicles, and twenty thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-six cents for tangibles. Do I have a motion to abate?
Second.
Do I have a motion to addend?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number fourteen. Tax Abatements. Under a thousand. Town council discussion and action with regard to the list of tax abatements under one thousand. Received two thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents for real estate, seven thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-six cents for motor, for motor vehicles, and four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and three cents for tangibles. Do I have a motion to abate?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The ayes have it. And before we adjourn, I'd like to wish Councilwoman Canzaro a good luck on all her future endeavors. We've had a very, very, very interesting journey together. You and I ran in the special election six years ago. Uh, we've been through a lot, we've been on the same side of issues, we've been on the opposite side of issues, but I think we formed a friendship through those six years and I look forward to working with you in the future. I think you've done a excellent service for the people in your district. They were very lucky to have you. I think the person taking over for you is gonna do a wonderful job of picking up the time that you've left off. And, um, I look forward to working with you in the future, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you so much, it's, um, I thought all day, you know, it's, uh, my last meeting and working with everyone here on the council and public service for me has always started in my heart. And I'm honored that I was elected twice to be able to sit up here and make very important decisions. And I think everyone knows I always went to the nth degree to make sure everything that I did and everything I voted on was in the best interest of the residents. And I'd like to also thank my council members who supported me for four years, um, as their council president. And I wouldn't have given up this opportunity for the world and, um, I'd like to also wish Councilman-elect DiLorenzo and Anne Marigi good luck. And, um, I'm happy to pass the baton to you. So, thank you again and it was my pleasure to serve the residents of North Providence. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Mr. President, I did wanna say something.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you.
Um, Mr. President, I just wanna address, uh, Councilwoman Canzaro and thank her for all of her service, for all of the residents of the town and particularly the, her constituents in District Three. There was no measure of effort that she would withhold from any of her constituents to, uh, answer their calls no matter what time it was, to bring them before us for consideration of issues that, that really and truly did need our attention. Uh, they were well-served by you, Councilwoman, and I know that they are very grateful for everything that you did for them and I wish you all the best in all of your future endeavors and I know that you will be successful at whatever you put your, your hand to. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you, thank you very much, again.
And do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made by Councilwoman Juasty, do I have a second?
Can I second that? I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman Canzaro. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Six years, it's been like a week, it seems. It's like a week.
It can happen though, it can happen, listen, my friend's got a problem with brown eyes and she lives in one of the nicest neighborhoods in the town, no, I know, but rats are the same, they're rodents.